meeting, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have with us from our A R C, Steve and Elizabeth, who have a friend with them. Why don't you come up and tell us about him? Travieso. Is that it?
Close enough.
Yeah.
I like that though. Sounds like it's from Harry Potter or something.
Yeah. All right, well, hello, everybody. My name, like she said, my name is Elizabeth. I'm one of the operations specialists at the Animal Resource Center. I've been with A R C for about five years in different positions, but currently I'm in the Operations Center. What does that entail? Well, I take a lot of calls from citizens from all over the county regarding a variety of things, whether they're concerned about a dog's well-being, a dog may be loose roaming in the streets, or they know where a dog lives at and they want to tell their neighbor that their dog is loose. So I type up the calls and I get them dispatched to our officers appropriately. We typically have about four to five officers a day that'll get the calls dispatched to. So some of you got to meet already our friend that we have today, Travieso, which is Spanish for mischivis, which is understanding. So there's an interesting story, and we call him Travie for short just because Travieso is a little tongue tie. So Travie was actually adopted from us back in 2015. So some of you might want to, might question, well, how do we know that? Well, he has a microchip, and not just one microchip, but two microchips. And so when he was brought in, we were able to track that information down. We cross-referenced with our chameleon system, which is our database, and we found his original M I D from back in 2015. So we tried contacting the original owners, but unfortunately, they were not able to take him back. They had rehomed him in the last, you know, nine years at some point, but they were not able to take him. So now he's looking for his new forever home, but he's just an old guy that wants all the love. So he might be old, but he acts five.
Yeah, he does.
So we got some exciting things going on this time of year. As we all know, starting December 1st is the start of licensing license season. So between December 1st and January 31st, we'll be super busy selling all the county licenses. So make sure you tell your friends and family to stop by or go online or even come here. And during that time also, the Animal Resource Center is offering $10 microchips, which is a secondary form to, of identification for dogs to get home. It's super helpful for us, especially because dogs, all the times when they're loose, they lose their collars out in the street. So when we scan them, we find that chip, we know they're gonna go home. So definitely make sure you tell your friends and family also about the microchips. Something else exciting that's going on, December 16th, we will have some of our staff as well as volunteers at the Dayton Mall attending the holiday, sorry, let me, holidays, holiday for the, home for the holidays celebration that we're gonna be with Sixa and the Humane Society of Greater Dayton. We have been attending this event for over a decade, so we're definitely excited to go back and hopefully we'll get some more dogs adopted there. Recently, we have been, we've had a donation from an organization named Matt Steele Foundation that gave us a donation to help with free adoptions. And so far, we've gone 80 dogs adopted with this foundation, foundation's donation. So hopefully, we can continue that through the Home for the Holidays. And then some last, lastly, some great work that our officers have been doing in the field. Recently, on the west side of Dayton, there is a house fire. And not that that's super uncommon, but this house fire had nine puppies and three adult dogs. And our officer Overbay has been working with them to help find new homes. And we actually were able to connect the owners to a rescue to help rehome some of these puppies, so they didn't get too displaced from the fire. So we continue our work to help the community and be a partner with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Every day. I saw last week, what, 11 dogs went out?
I think so.
Adopted, yeah. Well, that's what you put on the Facebook page.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have them on top of my head.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's great. And the work that you guys do, that's incredible for our furry friends. And I like that we're partnering with Sixa and the Humane Society. We always like that event every year.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of dogs and some puppies and.
Yep.
And then this guy, hopefully, by then will be adopted.
D A T V, can you get a good picture of the dog? Okay, good, I was on, make sure.
He's a cutie.
People see him.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw what he was up here, I was putting through his paces. He sits, he shakes, he lays down, he's just a real good guy. Unfortunately, he's not demonstrating his ability to speak, which is doing.
Yeah.
How old did you say he is?
He's about 10.
And you probably can't see the coloring on him on the Facebook or on TV, but he's kind of got a interesting coat.
Yeah, he, he would be like a black or brown brindle with some white.
He's a sweetie.
And he made a new best friend today, so.
Oh, it's great. Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Back again.
Absolutely. Whenever you want to bring a puppy in, we're here. All right. I know Paula always likes going after the dogs. County engineer, Paula Green here.
I don't have a dog, I don't.
I don't have a dog with me today.
Nope. Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ministers, ladies and gentlemen. We have a number of items for you today. First is Resolution 23-1514 to authorize an agreement with Jackson Township for participation in the 2024 Asphalt Concrete Resurfacing Program. 1515 is to authorize change orders one through seven to the agreement with Eagle Bridge Company for the Lamb Road Improvement Project in Miami Township, by adding $48,735.56 to the original amount for a revised total of $2,662,527.27. 1516 is to authorize the county auditor to pay by warrant $100,000 to the City of Clayton for permissive tax funds for the 2023 Phillipsburg Union Mill and Phil Project. 1517 is to approve the 2023 County Highway System Mileage Certification Report as prepared by the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation. 1518 is to authorize partial release of the cash sidewalk bond provided by Meeker Dogleg Venture, joint venture, in the amount of $5,567.58 for Meeker Creek Section 3 in Butler Township. 1519 is, we have a number of change orders to agreements with Brumball Construction, Inc. 1519 is for the Frederick Pike Bridge Reconstruction Project in Butler Township by decreasing the amount by $1,664.12 for a revised total of $518,335.88. 1520 is for the Free Pike Bridge Repair Project in the City of Trotwood by decreasing the amount by $5,000 for a revised total of $838,403. 1521 is for the Airway Road Bridge Replacement Project in the City of Riverside by adding $20,456.52 to the original amount for a revised total of $1,819,245.52. And then we have a couple of resolutions to release 100% of the cash sidewalk bonds provided by Divided Bridge Associates Limited. 1522 is for Washington Trace Section 1 in the amount of $3,539.72. 1523 is for Washington Trace Section 10 in the amount of $8,364.60. And we have resolutions to, to release 10% maintenance bonds and/or sidewalk bonds. 1524 is for Windstone Section 1 in the amounts of $27,699.70 for the maintenance bond and $2,109.36 for the sidewalk bond. 1525 is for Windstone Section 2 in the amounts of $58,376.36 for the maintenance bond and $19,189.06 for the sidewalk bond. 1526 is for Windstone Section 3 in the amounts of $69,616.26 for the maintenance, for the maintenance bond and $15,692.53 for the sidewalk bond. And 1527 is for Windstone Section 4 in the amounts of $18,758.98 for the maintenance bond and $25,121.28 for the sidewalk bond. And 1528 is for Windstone Section 5 in the amount of $10,895.61 for the maintenance bond.
You guys are gonna be busy.
Yeah.
End of year, people trying to get things cleaned up.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a court?
Hello, everyone. On behalf of Juvenile Court, Resolution 1529 to accept a continuation voca grant for the funding of staff, equipment, contractual, and travel costs for the CASA program in an amount not to exceed $133,637 through September 30th, 2024.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Office.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Treasurer's Office, we have Resolution 1530 amend the credit card policy to authorize the chief probation officer or chief probation officers designated to accept credit card payments for county services owed or otherwise paid to the Probation Services Department.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's, that's great that people can do that.
It's a great policy change. It'd be great that the statute allowed for the change, too.
That's great. Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 1531 apply for a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, for the F Y 2023 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grants Program Formula in the amount of $50,872.18.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator, Michael.
Under the County Administrator, we have Resolution 1532 approve the 2023 through 2026 collective bargaining agreement with District 1199, the Healthcare and Social Services Union, Services Employee International Union, S E I U. We also have, under the Clerk of the Commission, approve the minutes of the meetings on November 14th, 2023. Resolution 1533, approval of bills. Resolution 1534, approval of travel and expenses. Resolution 1535, approval of personnel action. All three of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. At this time, we would like to have Buddy come up and say a few words about our new collective bargaining agreement and the work that the entire team did working with S E I U. Thank you, Buddy.
Good afternoon. I'd first like to give a shout out to Dr. Michelle Pierce Mowgli, who could not be here today. She was instrumental in helping us get to close on this contract also. I'm a firm believer that the most important part of labor relations is relations. And, you know, we want, and we work to maintain a constructive labor relationship with all unions our employees have chosen. Anytime you go to the table to negotiate a new contract, there is a potential that it'll be contentious. Fortunately, for the most part, these negotiations were not. And I think we've forged an even more positive relationship moving forward. We got to the table with S E I U and were able to identify issues of mutual concern. We had productive and sometimes passionate discussions. We knew that the county needed to give some things and that we needed to get some things in return. But over just four sessions, we were able to come to an agreement. Now I want to give a shout out to our team, and please stand if you're here. Stephanie Marshall, A.J. Spencer, Andre Hicks, he is absent, Cassandra Martinez, pronounce it like that, Katie Heath, Lisa Leedy, and Rhonda Allen, and Mickey Hudson. That's, that was on our side of the table. Thank you all.
Thank you, team.
And then I'd also like to give a shout out, a shout out to the S E I U leadership and their team. Please stand if you're here. I know that Sherry is not, Sherry McKinney, Thad Breckenridge is not, Angel Drake, Melissa Gilliland, Donna Kidd, Keisha McGee, Cassandra Walker. We were across the table, but we, we really had a good time, I think. And I think we came to a good contract.
Did we miss anybody? Is anybody else not standing? Okay. Let's give them a round of applause, please.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Buddy, thanks.
Thank you, Buddy. Thanks to the entire team, we appreciate it. Thank you, S E I U team, our county team. I think now we want to have the signing ceremony. So if everybody could come up, please. Deb, you ready?
Um, let's have just Buddy up first.
Okay.
And then we'll do a picture.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I know. Oh, I wasn't sure.
Not true.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, you're right.
Thank you. Will each of us do a different pen?
Oh, no.
Like you do whatever.
No, you want your own pen.
Yeah, thank you.
I experienced no stress. All right, now you're on, please.
Yes. I'm on photo. Let me move this table out of order.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to block him. All right. Jerry. Okay, Jerry. Jerry's trying to get out.
2025, Jerry.
Do me a favor and snort. There you go. All right, he can't see Robert, he can't see you. Amber.
Where'd you get Amber before she raised? We have a new Stillwater manager, nurse manager.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Just point her out, okay. I said hi to her, but, yeah.
Amber. Right, I just wanted them to meet you.
Hi, Amber.
Nurse manager.
Hi. Nice to meet you. Thanks for being here.
Oh, you're welcome, thanks for having me.
Hi, Amber. I usually float out there at some point when, you know, when conditions are good, so I'll see you out there.
Okay, good, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the team, Amber.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Sherry, for pointing that out. Okay. It's Tyler's turn, Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a number of resolutions for you today, beginning with Resolution 1536. This selects the bid and authorizes an agreement with Triton Services Incorporated for the administration building Clerk's office and break room renovation project at their lowest investment of $170,000 through March 28th of 2024. Resolution 1537 authorizes a letter of understanding with the Ohio State University on behalf of the O S U Extension for leasing of 6,899 square feet of space at the Calumet Center through September 30th of 2024 with options to renew. 1538 extends the grant agreement with the Jack W. and Sally D. Eichelberger Foundation for the prison in reach, in reach program for the Office of Strategic Initiatives and Office of Reentry through June 30th of 2024. Resolution 1539 is to grant a quick claim deed to the Montgomery County, the Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disability Services for property located in the city of Trotwood and to record the same. And this is the old Richie Building. It's going from us to them. And then the following resolution, 1540, is with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated for trash hauling and recycling services for various county-owned buildings by adding Monday Community Correctional Institution for an additional cost of $374.42 per month, effective November 8th of 2023. The next resolution is 1541 with the County Commissioners Association of Ohio Service Corporation and Palmer Energy by increasing the fee and extending the term through December 31st of 2033. The last three resolutions authorize purchases, beginning with Resolution 1542 with Deere and Company of Two John Deere 6120M cab tractors for the Montgomery County, for the Montgomery Soil and Water Conservation District in an amount not to exceed $190,108.3. 1543 is with M&amp;J Technologies Direct Incorporated for the five-year replacement plan for the Prosecutor's Office in an amount not to exceed $150,018. And last is 1544 with Central Square for annual maintenance, annual maintenance and software support for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $145,610.90.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I did want to just point out on 1538, I thank the Jack and Sally Eichelberger Foundation for extending that grant. That's been really important for our Office of Reentry because what that grant allows us to do is as we know that men and women are coming back to Montgomery County from prison, our team is able to go and do exactly what it's called, in reach, and work with them and find out, you know, do a plan. What are you gonna do when you come home? Where will you live? What kind of services will you need? So that has really, that money has helped us send, I think we sent three people out to visits. And of course, during COVID, it was all done by, I don't know what the O D R C calls it, not Zoom, but. But now that we're going, we're back and we're, and we are going in. And so that grant really helps us make those connections and to let them know about the Montgomery County Office of Reentry. So we're thankful for that. Okay. Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Hopwood in for Matt Hilliard today. Have a number of resolutions for your approval today. Resolution 1545 to accept an easement deed for water lines through property belonging to Foyau Asset Management, A L L C, in connection with the development of the Foyau Glass Water Relocation Project Phase 2 and record the same. Resolution 1546 is to amend the agreement with Tank Industry Consultants for the Walnut Grove Tank Rehabilitation Project by extending the term through June 30th, 2024. We have Resolution 1547 to certify to the county auditor the Solid Waste District annual property charges for 2024 to be placed on a real property duplicate and collected in the same manner as any other real estate taxes. We have three resolutions to approve the plans, specifications, and estimated costs and solicit bids for the construction of water facilities. We have Resolution 1548 for the Lamb Road Bridge 12-inch water main relocation project at an estimated cost of $132,000. Resolution 1549 for the Mans Water Main Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $900,000. And the last one is Resolution 1550 for Farmouth and Esmeralda Water Main Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $11,156,000.
Lot of replacements. I know. None of it's very cheap, is it?
Yeah. Getting a lot of work done.
Yes. Yeah. Well, we've got to have the infrastructure. So that's great. Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Human Services, Jerry.
Thank you. We have two resolutions under the Department of Job and Family Services. Resolution 1551 was, which authorizes a memorandum of understanding with the Office of Reentry for space in the Job Center Suite 1175 through December 31st of 2024. Resolution 1552, which authorizes an inter-agency agreement between the Children's Services Division and the Prosecutor's Office for legal services provided by the Prosecutor's Child Protection Unit.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under comments by citizens, we do have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Willie Feaster, come on up. How are you?
Okay. Willie Feaster, you know, today I'm, three minutes really ain't enough time, but I'm, I'm, because I live in, I don't have to give up here, man, and give thanks to God, you know? Because it was 1999 when I first ever spoke in my life at City Hall. And that's been a long time ago, you know? And all the people that I met, I was like an amateur. You know, I can go Larry Neely, Riley Jamel, Mrs. Loretta Seifus. You know, everybody has fell by the wayside, they're too old, but Willie is still going strong. So right there, you know, sometimes I ask God, why you give me so much longevity? You know? Then I look, the 40 years I did incarceration, 40 years of my life in prison, I still got a mind, a body. So who could do that but God? I remember the day I walked in, I was a kid, man. Back in 1978, had to go to Lucasville Prison. Them boys were brutal. They didn't care, you know? So, you know, they fighting over booty, stabbing over booty. They don't care, so, but I walked through that and didn't get a scratch on me. And I did a thing when Ms. Renita Hawk Sanders had a radio show. She say, Willie, how you doing? How did you go through there and didn't get a scratch? I said, God, it ain't how big you are. It ain't, everybody got a knife. That ain't nothing. Only God can walk, I ain't no big dude, man. My first cellie, three days in the cell, big old muscle bound. You know you gonna get tried. Get on down here, bruh. Like, what's up, man? I'm new to this, I'm a kid. What'd he do? He grabbed me like, uh! I said, ho! I screamed, I said, bro, we gonna, you gonna get the police, bruh. I like booty, Willie. I've been locked up 30 years, I like booty. I said, bruh, I ain't been here a week, I'm a baby. He said, I don't care. I got 30 years in, I like booty, I want some booty. I was scared to death. I was scared to death. But I'm just saying, but look how God took me through that. He got me out of that cell, got me away from him. And then, three days later, he got killed by somebody else. So, man, God is good, man. You know, God, God, you know, he's good to all of us in so many different ways. Because I can't do this, man. I'm just a human being, flesh and blood. You know, ain't nothing special about me. Only person to get through, you know, this trauma, especially after 40 years, man. You got guys in there was there before me, '77. So I'm gonna say this real quick, I'm, my time is up. I went for the, in front of the parole board right after the Lucasville riots in 1993. And the parole officer missed constant upper sit there. And the parole officer, Miss Constance Upper, sit there right in front of me. And she said, Mr. Willie Feaster, we was in a room by herself. And she said, if I had the power, I would keep you locked up until the day you die. You have not one good bone in your body. She says nothing good about you. You never mounted nothing. And she, she gave me about the rest of my time, but she said, if I could, you would stay in jail till you die. Me and her went on one. So when I walked out that room, I was so hurt, man. I started crying, walking down the hallway, because she said she just see nothing in me worth coming back in society. But God seen otherwise, and he got me up out of here, man. So I had to give a thanks to God today.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster. Thank you very much.
Thanks for sharing with us. You certainly always bring us stories and, and concerns, and we, we do appreciate it. Thanks, Willie. All right. County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, the Stillwater Holiday Giving Tree is now fully virtual. So this is, so, so we have two.
Oh, I was gonna say, what's the one down in the lobby?
We have the one in the lobby, but we also have a fully virtual tree. This allows you to collect a wish list for residents from your computer and Stillwater Center home residents with severe disabilities or intellectual disabilities. The physical tree is still available in the administration building in the lobby. The codes on the gift tags that take you to the virtual tree. Participants are not required to purchase every item on the tag. You can just pick an item or do a few or all of them if you want to. Items must be new, unwrapped, and labeled with the resident's initials. And they must arrive at Stillwater by Friday, December the eighth. So please learn more about the Stillwater Center tab at mcohio.org. Again, Stillwater Center tab at mcohio.org.
But we also do pickups from here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they do have to be up to Stillwater, but you don't have to drive it up there.
No, no, we'll do pickup here.
Pickups here at the.
And we also have the, both the tree in the lobby and the virtual tree you can do from your computer.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Well, I know that the residents always look forward to that time of the year, and the trees, it's really special. They're usually very simple things that are on their list, but meaningful, so. A lot of hats and gloves. Okay, so, as mentioned earlier, it is that time of the year. The dog tags go on sale this Friday, and they will remain on sale through January thirty-first. Cost is twenty-five dollars, or twenty dollars if it's a spayed or neutered dog, and twenty-four for unaltered dogs. Did you hear me say twenty-five? Like, I must be like, thinking in the future someday, we might have to do that.
Kick a ball.
Mm-hmm. Ohio, remember this, in Ohio, dogs three months and older are required to wear a license at all times. And, you know, I think people have gotten out of the habit of that. We, we know that because of the number of tags that were not purchased in the last few years. And if you get a ticket, it's going to cost you a lot more.
Yep.
So it's worth the twenty dollars for sure. But the main thing is, you know, we see dogs that get lost. And if they're not shipped and they don't have tags, I mean, it seems like we see more and more out on social media, not just coming into our shelter, but that are out there and that good people just take a dog from the neighborhood. And if that dog gets lost and you don't know the dog, you can't figure out where it came from, right? So those tags, they are definitely, definitely their ticket home. It keeps, can get them home safe. People that can, the license can, it can be looked up so they know who owns it. And those funds that we do collect from the fees, they go to operating the Animal Resource Center and towards finding new homes for our dogs at the shelter. Doesn't pay for the whole Animal Resource Center, as Mike's going to show us in next week's budget. But those are so important, and it is the law in Ohio. So every dog over three months old, and I do have a new dog, and I got, now I'll be back up to four tags again. I was down to three, back up to four. But purchases, licenses, either here, many other outlets, but also you can do it online. And the Auditor's Office really likes it if you do it online, and they mail it to you within no time. So for complete details, you can go to mcanimals.org. Commissioner.
Yep. And we just had a wonderful dog here today, and I know that he would be loved to find a forever home, so.
He's a sweetie.
And there's a lot of wonderful dogs there. Unfortunately, I'd go back, go back there and look at them, and I'd take them home.
You got a new one recently.
I've got a new one, so. He's a baby. Anyway, we didn't have a meeting last week, but I wanted to thank, take the opportunity to thank everyone involved with our Montgomery County Food Summit, which was just a few weeks ago. We had a wonderful panel of speakers and many guests who are truly engaged in conversations about ending food insecurity in our community. And a shout out to our twenty twenty-three food champions, and we look forward to seeing everyone again next year. Speaking of food insecurity, last Tuesday, Commissioner Lieberman and I and all of the commission staff, we participated in a food distribution event at Dixie Drive-In. Not that I'm complaining, but it was cold and rainy there.
Yeah, no, I'll complain. It was bad.
Wonderful, wonderful event.
But we did it. We did it.
It was over a thousand people.
I know.
That we were able to help.
I think thirteen hundred families were served.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Some people came through and they'd say, I have for my whoever, so.
Exactly.
Even though there were a thousand vehicles, yeah, it was thirteen, over thirteen hundred people.
So, you know, shout out to Food Bank for.
Oh, for sure.
Putting this on and CareSource.
And CareSource was the sponsor.
Yep.
And, you know, when you see that, it's so well organized.
Oh.
So, I mean, the Food Bank is just amazing. But I do want to thank our team, Emily, Mary, who else was there? Amy's in here. Well, Melissa, I'm looking at the people that are here right now. Carrie, Abby. We were all there, and it was, well, it was, I, I would say it was depressing, but it was, it was also so nice because the people that we talked to, when you're putting the food in their car, they were just so gracious and thankful, and thankful. And when you think about it, so many of these people never had to do that before.
Yeah.
So.
That's what they were saying.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it's not going away. And one of the things to give a shout out to Sixa, because they had a truck there, and if you had a cat or a dog, they would give free food, so.
They ran out quickly, though. That was great. Okay.
All right. Well, to wrap things up, I had great pleasure almost two weeks ago now of attending our National Adoption Day event at Probate Court, and that was on November sixteenth. And it wasn't the first time I've attended that, but each and every time, it is a very moving, very wonderful, heartwarming event. Fourteen children who were in the care of Montgomery County Children's Services have now found their forever homes. And each, I, it went on all day. I wasn't there for all day, but I heard the first two rounds. And I must say, each case is so endearing in their own ways. And the one family, you talk about it takes a village, their entire church showed up. So they filled the whole room, and when they went to take the pictures, you didn't just have the family. They were adopting three children all at the same time. And just, you know, the best of our, of being in community, for sure. So the fourteen actually ties the record that we'd had the year before. But we actually, and I find this interesting, did seventy-two final adoptions this year. So just to give an idea, how many so far? And I want to do a huge thanks to our adoption caseworkers for all the great work that they do because this is just the final moment. This has been a long process for the children, the family, and our Children's Services Division in making sure that that's a good match. Judge David Brannon and his probate court staff obviously do a great thing, and they make quite a big deal of this. So there's balloons everywhere, cake, you know, this, they go all out. So it's truly memorable. However, we still have nearly a hundred eligible children who are looking for forever homes. So if you know anyone out there, or if you are one of those, please, please consider it. You can find out more information under Children's Services tab on our website at mcohio.org. And I was out of town for Thanksgiving, so unable to join the, the food drive, but Food Bank Drive. But honestly, the Food Bank Drive, they do them continually, and they just have it down pat. And unfortunately, there's always a long, long line, but they know how to make it move fast. And so kudos to the Food Summit and all of the people that really tackle food insecurity. You know, on Thanksgiving, when you have all that you need, we have to think about all of those who don't have all that they need. So wonderful Thanksgiving.
Sheriff, too, because he had vehicles there that were helping with crowd control on the Dixie. Yeah, like, it was crowded, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's wonderful.
All right. Well, our next meeting, and this is a little depressing, but our next meeting.
December.
It's December fifth.
Twenty-seven days till Christmas.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay.
All right.
On that note, move to adjourn.
Okay, I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Have a great week.